Hourly not to exceed amount, to provide guidance to us, to be a part of the construction process as well, and that's what you have in front of you.
Okay. So, the five thousand eight hundred twenty dollars is a not to exceed?
Correct.
So, the billing would be based on hourly?
Mm-hmm.
And your portion of that is just for coordinating time with him, but his hours are all hourly, based on his hourly scale?
His are all hourly, and then we've estimated a number of trips that may be necessary during construction, so if he doesn't need to come to the site, then we don't expend those hours or those costs. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. You have any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, if there's no questions, then I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the trainer HL proposal for structural design services for the 1916 City Hall building rental repairs in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider parking plan for Fifth Street north of Oak.
Mayor, I have Sean here with me. As you know, part of the overlay project you guys approved, allowing us to put in some parking, highly requested from the school systems and ICC. With that, we have extended spaces and Trans System has done a design for us as far as putting in the parking, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Sir.
Are the parking spaces gonna be twenty feet beyond the roadway?
The full-sized are nineteen feet, and the thought there is the wheel will go up to the edge of the pavement, and essentially, they still will be twenty. We did discuss adding a strip of gravel on the backside of the existing asphalt should, just to avoid any rutting that may occur, but the full-size stalls there are nineteen feet, and that allows two eleven-foot lanes out in Fifth Street.
Yeah. Hindsight, we probably should have specified with the contractor our actual widths, because you've kinda got, the gravel would be a great idea that then, instead of trying to mow that narrow strip, you could use some round-up and...
And we discussed the same thing, but we considered putting two ten-foot lanes in there, but with the bus traffic it is. It would be acceptable, but with the bus traffic, we stuck with the eleven-foot lanes.
Yeah, because visually, with the cars parked there in the stadium, that's gonna get a lot narrower even, you know, where you're looking at twelve inches in a lane, that's not much. And do you think the striping down the middle is necessary?
I think, we do, just, cars are going all over the place, and we have a lot of complaints and Barb talked to you, what they call a thunder road, a lot of racing, and so I kinda related this back to Sean, and then Sean can kinda tell you what they thought.
Yeah, we felt it was necessary just to define the two lanes, especially during game time, and I know, you know, just speaking with Barb, down near the pool, there's a lot of kids going back and forth across the roadway. We tried to control that best we could. There was some crosswalks. We hope that the striping slows people down. There's still gonna be people crossing everywhere, but at least maybe there'll be some traffic calming through all the stripings.
I could see a benefit as we return to Thunder Road and use it as a drag strip that we can define our lanes a little better. But, yeah, I hadn't heard it called Thunder Road since...
I never had either. I was educated by a few of our senior staff.
Yeah, yeah. Growing up, it was never Fifth Street.
Yeah.
It was definitely Thunder Road. On the ADA parking spaces, did you figure those based upon the number of spaces you're going to have?
We, originally, the ADA spots that are there now is based on the capacity of the stadium, and then we had a discussion that is basically using up a lot of those from the 4-H buildings, so we're basically gonna relocate some of those over where they're shown now, and ultimately, we'll have the number based on the capacity of the stadium. So, we may delete a few of these over by the 4-H, but still stick with the number required for the stadium capacity.
Aren't the parking spaces based upon number of spaces available?
Yeah, we're in excess of that.
That's good.
So, we went going with the stadium capacity. We're in excess based on the number of parking spaces.
Excess is better. I was concerned, it's really strange when you have an area like that, the way the ADA does interpret it as a separate area, and that side has to have its own, since it's separated by a street. One thing, in addition, you noted in the comments about the striping, that a contractor is going to be striping, and because they have the equipment, and I thought, well, you know, we've got a lot of crosswalks, a lot of parking spaces in town, a lot of, we don't have a striping machine?
We do not, and what I need to probably rephrase that a little better, what Mike really needs, and Mike's here and he can speak to it, is that center line done? If that could be done by the striping company, we can handle the stalls.
So, you're just gonna have them, you're gonna use reflective tape or the tape system on the center line?
Because it do contain beads on it.
Yeah, yeah. I thought, you know, as we look at next budget, if we don't have a striping machine, and that's something maybe, you know, to look at getting in the budget, because we got a lot of...
Yes.
Lot of areas.
Yep, correct.
We've been talking about that, Mike and I, is just to, you know, instead of trying to do, I mean, we do have a small striping thing, but do anything extensive, we have to rent one, and if we can, especially like if the county's doing some striping, again, we could get it at the same time. There's a lot of streets that need typing, just Tenth Street comes to mind.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of just parking spaces, and, you know, if you look at being able to deal with a machine as opposed to a paint roller and limited number of man-hours.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay. Did you have any question?
There was talk about some of the parking that's been added. People basically parked in these areas, and they parked off-road, basically on gravel or grass right away, whatever you wanna call it, and since we pay all that over, so we've actually given them a hard service to actually place a vehicle on. So, some of these, when I read through that, were limited as far as parking size. There was a remark about compact, identifying some spaces for compact cars because of the space you were looking at.
Correct, and it is basically essentially the limits of what asphalt could be installed. We've designated twelve as parallel parking down by the pool area, and then we've designated eight as sub-compact, and those will have to be signed that compact only, or something like that. And then the remainder, the seventy-foot, will be the full width based on the description of the nineteen-foot by ten-foot space that we discussed, so...
So, how many parking spaces did we end up with?
Eighty, no, ninety, ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety total. And there were, there are a couple of, if you notice, on the north end, there's a couple of gore areas, they're not around handicap, and there's just some equipment in those areas, equipment or fire hydrants that we gored those areas just to remain access available.
And then the total number of handicap parking that we'll have onsite when this is all said and done?
Well, we have five here, you know, the ADA Phase Four project, we were looking at redoing some of that across the road, and we really haven't arrived at how many of those we're gonna delete in the ADA Phase Four project, but we'll make sure those match the capacity of the, the total in that area matches the capacity of the stadium. I don't, we'll have at least five, and I can't give you the total number yet, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
Any other question? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, move to approve the parking plan, striping and no parking signs for North Fifth Street as presented.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. So, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item A, consider a request for a no parking zone on the north side of the 400 block of West Beach.
When they redid, reopened the Riley School and restarted using it again, you can see where the traffic exits there off North Tenth. That street's pretty narrow, it's twenty-six feet, two inches, and so, staff have gotten some complaints about people that are parallel parking on that, and it narrows the street down. If you have parallel parking on both sides, it next to found about eight to twelve feet of available roadway, and I did talk to one resident up there that would like to see the no parking zone on the north side. Consequently, the curb there was painted yellow long ago, so it was probably already pretty well a no parking area, and I contacted the superintendent and told him about it, and he seemed enthusiastic about it at that time.
With cars on both sides, and the amount of traffic would pick up from the preschool, and somebody had mentioned that the grade, that you're coming up a hill, that somebody going east, they were concerned couldn't see anyone coming up, and it was a dangerous section of the neighborhood, so... So, you'll paint the curb again, and, or just put up signs, what are you...
I won't paint the curb, so...
I was gonna hide in a bush with a camera.
Yeah, I could. It's, you know, that's something we've kicked around, but I think that probably the best practice, I think, was decided that signs would be best, but I support painting the curb there too, if it's practical.
I didn't know if you were thinking that was a good thought too, since you mentioned that it had been at one time, but no, I think that's a good suggestion. I've had some residents in the area be concerned about it also, with the increased traffic and the problem when you have cars parked on both sides of the street, the restriction makes it dangerous, so...
I had, I had, went down that street when they were letting kids out and with cars on both sides, you know, there were kids trying to run out in the middle of the street from behind a car, and it did narrow, and it was, it was hard to see, and then I had one of the residents say that when that was used as Riley School years ago, that was a no parking, a no parking area, so...
Right, and then city staff informed me of that, and then when I saw the yellow striping on the curb, I said, oh, it's, it definitely was.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the parking plan. Excuse me, I move that we designate the north side of the 400 block of West Beach a no parking zone.
I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Next item is reports. Item A, report on the August seventh, 2018 flooding event.
Oh, excuse me, I jumped it. You're right. Discussion, I missed, discussion of removal of archive storage evidence and furniture from 1916 City Hall. Thank you.
Is that picture taken this morning?
Yeah.
Looks good.
Mayor, we're seeking some direction from the commission on this. Several of us went and did an assessment, and you've been in there with us when we were in with Vance and them. There's a tremendous amount of furniture that needs to come out, but more than that, the bottom of the vault, it has a lot of historical records that are in an atmosphere that's pretty bad underneath the second floor. There's a lot of history there. I don't know how you would address that, or how you would get those records out of there and then try to preserve them. I'm told a lot of that's cemetery records and different things like that, that's probably, probably needs professional help to preserve. Upstairs, there's a tremendous amount of data, it's in boxes that have disintegrated, that it's gonna have to be reboxed and moved down. It's just a huge manpower thing. We, our guess, I don't know what Vance and them think, it would take seven to ten days. You know, we were just putting some numbers at it. You know, Jerry could put officers that are on duty, they would have to be off-duty, so now you're in overtime, and we were in the twelve to fourteen thousand dollars in overtime just paying officers to be there, not to count city staff on our side, and so we're here seeking direction. We think it's something that we're really not capable of doing with what's up there and the archive, and how to do this properly, you know, work comp, there's always that concern, bringing it down the stairs, somebody getting hurt and severely injured. So, we're here seeking some direction from the commission on how to handle this and get this out in a timely manner so that these guys can do their work. We have, I know Craig visited with them, and, yeah, so, I mean, I'll answer any questions you have. Craig's here, we're here.
It's a significant project, obviously, as Dave said, and part of it is such the things down in that basement, you know, we were talking about, you need really trained personnel with hazmat, you know, capability to get down into that mold, and as Dave mentioned, when he talked about the workers' compensation, not just falling, coming down the stairs, because again, you can't just haul it down, you have to haul it down the stairs manually, and it's just an overtaxing job. I don't think city staff could do it properly. You'd really need somebody that's equipped to do that. That's, that was our feeling after discussing it.
So, the lower level of the vault is actually the basement, it's not...
Correct.
It's not an underground...
Yeah, yeah, and it's just sealed in.
You know, like we talked about earlier with the vault and the records, you know, to take them out and move them back in, I'd just lock the vault during construction and seal it. The furniture, I guess, what was the intent when we vacated City Hall, what was the intent with the furniture?
At that time, we were given direction by the consultants to leave it. At that point, we could not remove it.
But then it wasn't found to have mold, so do we need the furniture?
Actually, to save money, the county has contacted us, which I put in here, if we could get the furniture to the garage, get it wiped down and cleaned, and they would like to do a surplus auction with us with, probably from the water damage stuff, their flood, and other surplus stuff we have in the city, and just auction the stuff from there.
Okay, so, that sounds reasonable for the furniture, what do you think?
I think too, the cost were just, just an estimate. I mean, they weren't hard figured costs.
Yes, sir, I mean, Jerry could speak to more of that, as what it's gonna take as to deal with the evidence versus he would have to bring a team into that, whereas, if somebody else is doing it, a person could be there, but he's gonna have to bring in up to five officers off, on overtime and dedicate to that to get all of that out of there.
Yeah, well, the furniture, we got that solved, we got the vault solved. Now, for the third floor, there's two, there's data storage up there, and there's evidence storage. The records and the data that's up there, I don't see any sense in moving it all out and go through it somewhere else. Somebody, staff that knows what needs to be kept, needs to go up there, what is trash, locate it or bag it, or have a chute, some way to get it separated, then what needs to be saved as far as records, separated, and put in, as they're going through it, they could put it in new boxes if it needs to be in boxes, but then, for taking it out of there, to relocate it to a storage center, then I think we need to get bids for some moving companies, you're right, and we don't need to put our staff at risk going up and down the stairs, or, you know, they need to get some equipment that they can get it out of the old jail reasonably. So, record storage that's not related to police evidence, I think we need it sorted to find out what's good and what's not, and then get it bagged and get a price for hiring somebody to move it. Evidence, so, I'm not real familiar with moving it. I know the access is limited, and if only your officers can be in there handling it, or can your officers box it and then somebody else move it out?
That's, that's what I've been discussing with staff. The last time we've moved evidence before, and it's a pretty extensive process, we took, what's there now is eligible for destruction. So, it just is a, the last destruction orders we got took about two years to get those through the court, so this would be a huge amount of destruction orders, and I could probably put somebody to do in that full-time for quite a while to get, to get that done. We just work through it as we have time. But, it's still evidence, it's still things we don't want out in circulation, so the plan would be our staff box it and then supervise the handling of it once it's sealed, and then put it into storage, and there it sits until we get the destruction orders done.
Okay, so then, the best would be for your staff again to go through the evidence, box it, seal the boxes, and then the same company that bids on removing the archive material that we want to keep, then they could give a bid for moving your evidence out, and then you could just have law enforcement supervision while they remove the evidence to a vehicle that's sealed or contained to a suited storage facility?
Right, right, it wouldn't even, it wouldn't even have to be that high security of an issue. Again, it's all for destruction, so we can pack it together, we don't have to maintain separation of it, we don't have to worry about cross-contamination, we just need to seal it. And so, essentially, you're correct, we wouldn't have to seal a vehicle so long as we had a staff member there to maintain custody of everything that's moving in and out.
Okay, what kind of storage area does this have to go to? How secure?
I mean, the plan that we put forward would, I would view that as adequate for the storage of it, and the security, it'd be inside of a layer, it'd be inside of one physical layer, and then it would be inside of another physical layer inside the box itself. So, the location of the box would provide a physical layer, and then the box itself provides a physical layer.
So, for the final location to store the archive and your records, have you identified a location yet? I noticed in the report, you mentioned some shipping containers. Is that what you're still planning?
Yeah, we've, we've been looking, and we can get a shipping container forty-foot for about thirty-seven hundred dollars, and the plan was, Mayor, when they were no longer used, and they potentially could be used by some of the public works or public utilities for storage or something like that, so, thinking ahead, we're not getting something... Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, even there's some fire departments that take containers like that and build a training centers out of them. Craig had a fire department that done that, so, I mean, there's future use for it, so, that was kinda the plan to set that. Also, at sanitation, we have video security, so we have it monitored so that we could, if something happened, we'd have it on camera.
Okay. So, the records stored in the vault are gonna stay in the vault?
Yeah, okay.
The furniture you're gonna get with...
Excuse, the stuff just in the main floor of the vault, all that needs to come out? Were...
Does anything in the vault need to...
Both sections can stay.
Okay, all right, okay.
Does the combination on the vault work?
Yes, it does, it does secure.
That's secure. The furniture, then you're gonna get with Montgomery County?
They, yeah, they wanna do a joint...
And do a joint?
Option in the garage.
So, then archive staff's gonna sort through, find trash, and...
Then find something.
What needs to be saved, and the police then will box up the evidence and seal the boxes, then you'll contract to have it relocated to a storage container?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Was that, now, we're looking at time schedule though.
That was my next question, are you wanting staff to move all that furniture to the garage?
Well, you know, if you...
And the timetable to get it?
It would be better...
How would the timetable get it done?
If, if we can get, you know, hire temporary help, someone, I'm thinking not a thirty-five dollar an hour...
Yeah, just some...
Worker to move the furniture.
Potentially express or some of those, okay.
Yeah.
To relocate that, okay.
Yeah, and just get that done, because what we're looking at is end of, end of October, having asbestos report ready, the package ready to go to bid. End of November, maybe mid-December before Christmas, because you lose time with Thanksgiving, so maybe bids by mid-December. Then you're gonna look at construction starting January, mid-January, so, you know, the thing, the contractor, as soon as it's, we need to move on getting, getting it out. Does that sound about reasonable, Vance, on time schedule?
So, if it's out by December, we're good.
Yeah, and I guess there's a little, we know, we just probably need to get with Vance of what you're expecting moved out, and what's demolition. You know, there's, there's desks, and then there's like cabinets on walls, I mean, that, I guess...
If it's bolted...
Leave it.
Leave it. If it's a bookcase that's movable...
Movable, chair, desk, take it, sell it.
Yeah.
Or...
Any base cabinet or wall cabinet that's attached is covered in...
In the demolition, okay. That answers that question.
Yeah, the, the computer racks, though, they're not scheduled in anything that you've got, are they for demolition?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we asked the engineer to include that, MEP engineer, so anything that's bolted to the building can stay, including those racks, and that'll be taken care of, yes.
Okay, great, great. Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Report on the August seventh, 2018 flooding.
Mayor, we're just gonna give you a report on the flooding, and unfortunately, at the dark, so there isn't pictures of that night, so we're going back soon after the flood, and then we've been back there just last week again, so we'll go through this, and then we can answer any questions you have, and then let you take it from there. August seventh, just a little bit of timeline that evening. August 7th, just a little bit of timeline that evening. We were having a budget hearing here that was just starting at 5:30. In fact, Leonard, you'd called the meeting to order and our phones at the back rang and Elk City was reporting a funnel cloud. From about 5:30 to 8, the area from Elk City, Elk City, Kansas to Sycamore just continually had thunderstorms that were developing just west of Elk City and that were just putting a tremendous amount of rain. At 8:00 PM, the National Weather Service had estimated six to eight inches of rain had fallen in that area to our northwest. Independence began to receive rain approximately 8 o'clock and it went till 1:00 AM. We received approximately 8.37 inches or about 1.6 billion gallons of water. 9/19, it started for us that evening with a fire alarm at the middle school. They had water coming into the building and from there, multiple rescues started happening up until about 1:00 AM when the event slowed down. This is just from the 1% flood zone. We are not talking about houses outside of the flood zone that have been damaged. 22 houses have been damaged, two with significant damage so far at this point. Sean helped us, Turner helped us with this information a little bit from some reports we found from 1983 from the Corps and also another, another report in 1993 that has been located. But a 1% flood for a five-hour event is 1.18 inches per hour or a total of 5.9 in five hours. On August 7th, we had 8.37 in five hours or 1.67, which exceeds 100-year flood. And through the charts that KDOT has, we estimated it was 150-year flood event that evening. This goes back to the 1983 Corps study. I just put this here and to show you, Mayor, and the citizens. Back in 1983, the Corps said from Sycamore Street to Maple, a 30-foot channel would help alleviate the 100-year flood event. Estimated back in 1983, 3.7 million. Estimated at 9 million today, in today's dollars. And that was back in 1983. This is just a few pictures from that night and then we'll get into the walking the creek. Picture from the Elk City Fire Department, 911 Center as the event was going on. Whiskey Creek, as you know, goes from Oak Street, crosses down to Beach, kind of have a red line, goes between 17th and Crescent, goes on to Railroad Property. There's one, two, three bridges in there. It goes under, comes to Sycamore Street, goes underneath Sycamore Street, is underground for about a half a block, has about a 20-yard area that opens back up and then it goes underground back over to the UP, runs south to about 100 yards north of Laurel, 150 yards north of Laurel, crosses to the west side, drops all the way down to Main Street and then it crosses again back over and eventually crosses Maple and then runs along the tracks to the Cherry Street. This is the north side of the bridge at Oak Street. I believe my next picture is gonna be looking north out into the field. The height of the water was coming over the top of the guardrail there that evening as water was coming across that field there. We had several cars that were stalled near there and several rescues in that area as the water came across that area.
Is this close to the Reserve Center?
Yes, it's gonna be right down the street to the west. About halfway between there and SMP. Again, the water height was at the top of the guardrail coming across about the middle of the guardrail on the walk, water was going across the road at that height and then spreading out to the houses adjacent there. Moving across onto this side. This area here between Oak Street and Beach Street is kind of a vegetative area. There's a lot of high grass and a few saplings in there.
Is this the south side of the same bridge?
This is the south side of Oak. You have two properties on both sides. All of this area is owned by property owners.
It looks like the drainage area is restricted much more on this side than on the north side.
Yeah, there is a little, the top picture, and you can kind of look down, there is, there was a little bit of debris. But for the most part, they were open and flowing, but it was also flowing over the top of this whole device. This is looking a little bit more, standing back, looking to the north. The creek is below. There's a sapling there that's kind of there, probably about an inch in diameter that I'm kind of looking through right there. Now I've kind of turned around and I'm looking back towards Beach Street at this canal. That vehicle sitting down there is at Beach Street. And you'll see that, I don't know if I'm, there's a little, looks like a white spot there and we'll get to that in a minute. That's actually a sewer line that crosses the canal there, right there. So we do have utilities in the Whiskey Creek that sometimes cross Whiskey Creek and other times they run parallel along Whiskey Creek. Now this is standing right there at that concrete pack, kind of looking to the bridge. You can see the stream down there below, but you can see there's a lot of vegetation in this area. And you can see the Beach Street Bridge kind of through there, but there is a little bit of vegetation in this area. And then here is Beach Street. This is the underpass. And you can see where the water height was. It was about two foot deep along Beach Street in this area as we were doing rescues. So the water and talking to one of the residents that live right there, she said the water was hitting so hard and hitting that cement, it was splashing, forcing it out to the sides of the houses in that area. Now we're crossing over south of Beach Street on the south side of the bridge. The canal is pretty much open here. This is another shot looking at it. There is vegetation along the banks, but when you get from Beach Tree back to Circle, the canal is pretty wide open and the residents in several of the places have done different things along the banks. Again, we wanted to show there's a sewer line. And the question is, why is it important to bring up a sewer line? A sewer line, that's where it has to be at, so we hear people like dredging or you need to widen the creek. You know, you can't take the creek any deeper at that point unless we would do some sort of pump to move the sewer or our line that goes across, because we, you'd create a barrier there.
What size is that line, 24-inch?
Terry?
Eight inch.
That's an eight inch right there.
So it's up higher than? That's the top of the sewer line?
When those lines were installed, they were actually installed below the flow line.
Right.
And what you're seeing there is erosion that is coming over that concrete and of course, it eroded out.
But the light part is the top of the sewer line? The light strip on the concrete's the top of the sewer line? And then came back because of erosion, you created a little spillway.
That's, that's what's happened there.
Okay.
And we're gonna see that a couple more times too as we go along.
There's also, if you look down the bottom, there's a water line running through there. There's gas lines through there.
There's a water line?
There's a water line.
Below the sewer line?
Yes, it won't be there for long.
Yeah. Yeah, that's reversed.
Well, it, it's making it go away really quick.
I just put this in there, Mayor, to show there's a tremendous amount of water going and it eroded. That's a gas line which Atmos has went out and taken care of because it had eroded the bank so much, it exposed that line. As you go south from Beach Street, the Whiskey Creek makes a sharp turn. And we don't know who put this in there. It's gonna take somebody, you may have some history out, Leonard, but this was put to keep the water from going straight over into the house at Crescent. So it's forcing it to turn back towards 17th Street and then it's gonna turn again back to the south. So this wall is there. It did go over that wall there, because that house did get flooded on the backside of that. Again, we're coming back, continuing south towards Circle. Creek is open, the banks are pretty in this area, a lot of vegetation on the sides of the banks. Continuing on down, this pretty open. We're starting to come to some residents. We got behind 946 Crescent and on the left 17th. You're gonna see in the next picture, I think this one's a little bit better. To me, it looks like, you can see they put like fencing and then the resident put cement bags, it looks like, and just lined his whole bank with cement bags along there. And it runs all along that side, kind of creating a bank.